School Board Meeting, June 20th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Call to order. All are present, so let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a few changes to the agenda. Jen has very kindly highlighted them for us. So if we look at number nine, we were able to get the May meetings, May school board meeting minutes put together, and so we put that under consent agenda A. Okay? And then, under personnel, we have the hiring of Camden Huntley at the bottom there in that long list of hiring. And then, we go over to the next page, under donations, a donation that the football team received, and then, under H, the approval of the Mauer County Family Services Collaborative Joint Powers Agreement, which I'll talk about later. All right, does anybody have any other changes to the agenda? Okay, I would like a motion to accept the changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
Pat, thank you, and second?
Second.
Thank you, Kyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now, we need approval of the agenda as currently printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do we have any public input tonight? Okay. Number seven, recognition and good things happening. Thanks for a great school year to the LO staff. You are appreciated, and we are excited for your return in August. Congratulations to our 2023 graduates and 2023 retirees. Best of luck in all your future endeavors, and thank you to Dom Jones of SCC Construction for his volunteer work completed in the kitchen. Much appreciated. Under reports, then, let's go right to the principal's report, please.
I don't really, and actually, I don't have much for tonight, other than, really, I wrapped up my reports for MDE for the school year, and then, right now, I'm working on handbook changes, finalizing schedule, master schedule, stuff like that. So, really, nothing to report on tonight. You should get first readings of a lot of, most, or you get all the handbook first readings in July, so I'll have second ones in August, so you'll be ready to go for the school year. And then, I'll bring, I'll try to bring the master schedule and all of those things, hopefully, July, so everything you should see for next year should come next month.
Okay. Thank you. Jenna, I see that you're here, but I don't have you on my, were you gonna, no.
You don't have.
Just part of the group.
Huh?
Just part of the group.
Okay, I didn't want to, I didn't want to miss that.
She misses us. I can tell.
And so, then we'll go to superintendent's report.
All right, I just have a couple of things as well. First of all, excellent job to Amy Hungerholt in her kindergarten graduation. If you did not see the video, you have to watch the video. It's absolutely adorable, it'll make your day, so congratulations to her, it's a big job to get done. Reiterating what the agenda said, congratulations to our retirees. It's always sad to see such seasoned members of your family essentially leave. You know, they're taking a lot of knowledge and expertise with them, so a huge thank you to them, and, and as Deb said too, to our staff and students too. What a great school year again, so, good for them. As I mentioned in my notes, we are looking at doing some things with our football field. I know Dave and Kyle and Amanda will talk tonight a little bit at committee meeting agenda time, but we do need to do some things with our football field for next fall, so we're working on that. Speaking of building and ground stuff, our LED project, our final payment, will be completed here this month, so we're pretty excited about that. And, let's see here, our school district audit, we found out it is tentatively scheduled for September 18th and 19th, so, kind of look at us being really busy that week, and especially this young lady here. Speaking of, welcome to Sharon Peterson, our new CLA business manager, and she's going to be presenting tonight along, along with me on our budget, so our revised and our next year's budget. Aaron mentioned this earlier, our MDE reports, so he wraps up his, I jumpstart mine right away in July. So if you see that I'm, you know, focused really on my two or three computers in my office, I am, a business manager can attest for that, our July and August is so busy with reporting, but it's just kind of part of the deal. So we'll get those done. EA negotiations has started, our committee members will talk about that tonight too, but that's our teachers' contracts. Our hope is to finalize that by August for thinking, so, let's hope so. Keep in mind, it's summer, we have a lot of building and grounds projects going on, whether it's the general maintenance, maintenance stuff, such as classroom cleanings, or, you know, painting of walls, whatever it may be, but just kind of keep an eye out for any dangerous areas or dangerous work zones across the district, that tends to happen sometimes. Let's see, oh, this summer, Aaron will talk more about this in July, so just a real prep here, he's done a really nice job of getting our curriculum cycle going and moving with that, and really, having the teachers dig deeper, not into just purchasing curriculum, but looking at what that curriculum can do to support our students' achievement. And so, a lot of intense professional development happens in the summer, especially for those teachers or those disciplines who are on high cycle, it's called, so the cycle where we all want to start researching and looking to purchase in the next couple of years. So, kind of look for information on that from Aaron and I, or Mr. Hungerholt and I. Let's see here, I believe, yes, all the other things, I'll kind of jump in during your agenda, I'm going to add a couple of things for you guys, so just kind of be prepared for that, so, otherwise, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll move on to number nine, the consent agenda. So the May school board meeting minutes came to us either yesterday or today. Did everybody get a chance to look at those? If not, I believe you have them in your packet. Did anybody have any questions, or? Look, okay. All right, then, our treasures reports, our June bills and May wires. I looked through the bills, didn't see anything out of the ordinary, wires are coming, I'm understanding. The budget summary, there's going to be a further discussion later on down, and then the student activity funds, that was all, Jen had sent all of that to us. Everybody feeling all right? So then, C is the fundraisers, the FFA is requesting to do the fruit butter braids cheese, October 10th through November 3rd, 2023, this is a traditional fundraiser for them, and the class of 2024 would like to do the frozen pie gourmet candy, September 18th through October 6th, 2023, again, a traditional fundraiser. Now for personnel, personnel recommended approvals. Nonrenewal of Katherine Befford, teacher, effective June 2nd, 2023. Nonrenewal Cassidy Milks, accounts payable, effective May 26th, 2023. The hiring of Jessica Kildall, a paraprofessional on step one, and the hiring of Brittany, is that Wong? Professional, paraprofessional, step one. So I'm really glad to see we got some paraprofessionals after we had our retirees. Hiring of Bob Dries, junior high, girls' basketball, and of course, his salary pending on the negotiations. Resignation of Nick Bly for junior high girls' basketball, effective immediately. Resignation of Lorraine Prindle, teacher, effective June 2nd, 2023. Resignation of Chrissy Schuman for the one-act play director, effective June 2nd, 2023, and then the hiring of Don Holmquist, one-act play director for, under year one. Hiring of Kendall Olsen, student pool worker. Hiring of Ryder Stern, student pool worker. Hiring of Logan Deemer, student pool worker. Resignation of Jacob Payne, student pool worker, effective May 14th, 2023, and the hiring of Camden Huntley, student pool worker. All right, so, that is all on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or need any clarification? If not, then I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Dave. Second?
Second.
Kyle?
Question?
Yes.
Do I have to abstain?
I think, if Angie and Kyle could abstain.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And the reason why I didn't remove them to a different agenda item is because they're students.
No, you don't have to.
I'd rather have you guys move.
It's not a close enough relation.
Yep.
So Dave, wanting? Okay, made the motion, second?
Kyle.
No, I thought you said he had to abstain.
Oh, yes, he does.
I get second.
Amanda's going to call, I'm going to go Amanda for the second.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained?
Abstain.
Two. Yep. So, the policy committee met, and we reviewed the second reading of policies in the 200 series. There was no changes made from before. Did everybody get a chance to look at those? Any questions? Okay, so I will be looking for a motion to approve the second reading of policy 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, and 203.6.
I move we approve the second reading of those.
Good. Thank you, and, yeah, some of the policies, and a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then, in the policy review, for the first reading of the 700 series, we had a little bit of a discussion with regard to fund balance, and Jennifer's going to do a little research for us.
Yeah, so, for 714, our fund balance, our fund balance policy is currently at 30%, and I've done just handwritten research, it'll come to the committee, but it'll also come to you guys, and throughout the state of Minnesota, I have not yet found a 30% fund balance. It's been either, I'd say the lowest is probably 3%, the highest is 25%. So, but what we're finding out is, historically, Leroy Ostrander, three months of expenses is about 25%. So I'm going to come forward with some data to the committee to see if we can kind of, hey, wait a minute, this is pretty extreme, considering, you know, inflation rates that we talked about, considering everything else with our budget, you know, let's be a little bit more reasonable. If we're at 30, we can't do LED projects, we can't do carpet and tile, we can't do curriculum, things like that, which hasn't been done in the past, because, I'd like to say it's going to be the policy reasons, that's what I'll say.
I think in the past, we were talking three months expense.
And that's what it should be, by rights, you know, so, that's where we're at, at 25.
Yeah.
So, we'll bring to the committee, and then to you guys next month also, looking for a potential change, and I'll have more data to bring to you too, and send off to you this month, upcoming month, but I'll, I'll keep digging and, and send a better sheet than my handwritten sheet to you too, so. Another policy review too, number 712, we were talking about the video surveillance, other than on buses, and we, I, I cannot seem to find, if anybody can maybe guide me a little bit, the retention of records of school board video. I cannot, I'd rather not call our district attorney on that, because it is an expense, I'd rather do my own research, but if you guys know of anybody who knows retention of records, let me know, and I'll reach out to them, or feel free to, that's fine too, or if you can find anything online, feel free to send it my way, but specifically for video surveillance at schools on, outside of buses, you know, we just want to know, Aaron brought up that question, and we don't know how long we keep things.
Right.
For that. We know everything else, personnel files, student queue folders, things like that, but this was a new one for us, so, any help would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, so those are the things that, the only things that came up in discussion on the policy review, so, I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept the first reading of policies, with the understanding that we're working on finding out some, some more information.
Should we just approve the ones that there are no questions on, for now?
We can.
Or?
Yeah, just take two, 712 and 714 out for now, until we get more information.
Okay, I would make the motion that we approve the first reading of policy 713, 720, 721, and 722.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we'll get you more information on the other two.
Just a quick question, how, how long do, like, a regular school with the cameras running, how long is that video stored?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? And then, it just overrides itself?
Yeah, we can get it back, but it's really hard.
Okay.
Really hard to get it back, so it's two weeks, you can easily get it.
Okay.
And then the retaining of that would be like if there was an issue that we, we have.
Something happened years ago, and let's say a lawsuit comes up.
Yeah.
And it's all been on video, it's like, oh, can we go back five years? I don't know.
No, there's no chance.
There's no chance of doing it, here for our system.
No, it's just, like, a single day of video takes up massive amount of storage, you just can't.
Can't do it.
You'd need a massive room full of storage to store stuff in five years.
Interesting.
Unless you download it to the day it happens.
So it's not like cloud-based storage that it?
No, it's all sort of physical hard drives. Sorry, it's server.
So like, if we had an incident of some sort that was videotaped, we could then pull that incident and store that?
Yeah, if you, if you know the incident happens, you can download it.
Happen, right.
Apparently, you speed drive, and then it's stored forever, of course.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So that's kind of, we might want to, we might even want to.
Finagle the policy.
So if it's changed, could we change to cloud-based storage, or is that based on what kind of?
That's not the question I can answer, that would be Jeff's question, so, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, we will, we will keep working on those other two policies. Donations, look at this, this is amazing, huh? So, St. Patrick's Catholic Church donated $500 to help bring down the delinquent lunch balance, and then, a lot of donations came in for the summer rec program. City of Leroy 3000, Alter Trading 300, First State Bank 25, Chevrolet Buick of Spring Valley 200, Braun 100, Next Generation Pork, Hurt Star 100, Cray Insurance 100, Oster under Care and Rehab 100, Jacobson Enterprises 100, Leroy Lumber 100, Grass and Sun Seeds 100, Hefty Seed Company 100, TNT Electric 100, Gift to Gab 100, National Bank 500, Northern County Co-op 25, Napa Auto Parts 25, Creating Wellness 25, Emporium 56 25. That is generosity of a community right there. That is something. Okay, and then, under number three of the donations, the football team did some moving and cleaning at a house, and received $400 for that. So, I think that, that's really great recognition for our community, to know that they've supported the school really well, and we appreciate them very much, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the donations.
I'll make the motion to accept the donations.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the 2023 Joint Powers Activities Athletic Agreement. Would you like to address that, or would you?
I sure can.
Okay.
So, for quite a few years, Leroy Ostrander has collaborated with surrounding school districts in terms of our athletic programming, and that, and of course, not all our athletic programming, baseball, softball, newly formed dance, you may recall when some of our dancers came and presented to all of you, and a couple other things, cross-country, I believe, track are the others, golf as well. And so, we'd like to continue with this, this effort. So, Mr. Hungerholt, Mr. Carrier and I met with the other superintendents and A.D.s, I believe it was last week or the week before, to talk about this, and it was time for this renewal to come up. So the only changes you're going to see in the renewal is the addition of dance, the dates have changed, of course, and then, we have, we have decided, because this was such an old cooperative agreement, we needed to increase costs, just like everything else, whether it's in your home or here at school, there's an increase in cost in everything, and even tonight in the budget, you'll see the increased cost, Sharon did put this in already, I was thinking he'll probably approve this, so, we decided to put it in there, but $500 per, per athletic event, or, I'm sorry, athletic discipline.
Sport.
Sport, yes. So, anyway, nothing major, but no, really great conversation though, we met for over an hour, I would say, and just had a really good conversation, how we all work together so well anyway, and if issues come up, we tend to really rally with each other and help each other out. If we have disagreements, we will call each other and, and work through them, and, and we have quite a few disagreements, especially at the superintendent level, but we tend to work it out pretty well. But overall, we all agree this is a very good cooperative agreement, and one that should be modeled, we feel, across the state. So, I'm very happy with it, and would really highly recommend you approving it again.
Okay, so in our packet, this is called the Cooperative Athletics, July 2023 through June 2026.
And I believe I sent you the old one as well, just for your files, again, destroy it, do what you want, but I thought you might want to just review it too.
Okay, so, did anybody have any questions when they looked through this? All right, so at this time, then, I will accept a motion for the approval of the 2023 through 2026 Joint Powers Activities Athletic Agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2023 through 2026 Joint Powers Activities Agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. All right. Approval of the Identified Official With Authority. There you go.
I know, isn't that funny title? The Iowa?
The Iowa.
Yes, and I do get emails from MDE that says, "To Iowa." And I think, this is Minnesota, and I have to keep reminding myself, because we don't get them all the time, but, this is a yearly approval, you probably recall this, every single year in June, so I can get ready for that new fiscal year, but what this is, it's giving me authority from all of you to say yes. Our business manager, Peterson, can go to 15 different reports in MDE and move money around, approve a CT budget, create a budget, whatever it is. Or Aaron, who just submitted his DIRZ report, which is our disciplinary incident report, to make sure he has access to all that data, and, and, you know, I can support him in that, because it all comes back to me anyway, but that's what it is, it's all about secured reports, nothing else. I cannot give access to, for example, Deb for the DIRZ report. There's only one person or two people that get to see reports throughout the district, so it's a really secure system, and that's why you only want one authorizer, and that's usually your superintendent.
Do we have to sign anything on that?
No, I just submit, once this is all over, there's a document I sign that says ISD 499 on June 20th did approve this at their board meeting.
Okay.
It's an authorization form I sign.
Okay.
Actually, I don't even sign it, I think I just submit it.
Okay. So we should add on here, approval of identified official in, with authority, that, that, that you are that.
Yeah.
Approval, so I'm going to say.
Yeah, you can do that.
The approval that Jennifer Becker Johnson is our identified official with authority.
Probably should put my name on there.
I think, you know, I think it's a good idea.
Kind of clears it up a little bit.
I know, but I feel like.
Are you going to say superintendent if you?
We could, but, we could, but, you guys wanted to say superintendent, or Jennifer Becker Johnson?
I was just going to say superintendent, but whatever.
We can.
Doesn't matter to me. They know me both ways, so.
What would you prefer, superintendent?
Or you could say Superintendent Jennifer Becker.
There we go.
Put them both?
How political was that?
Yeah. All right.
So it's not.
So, I am looking for a motion for the approval of Superintendent Jennifer Becker Johnson as our identified official with authority.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dave, you better make that motion.
And second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, would you guys like to talk about the budget, and then we'll do, like you want to do, do you want to talk about the revised budget and the preliminary all at once, and then we can do both of those nomin, or those motions? Yes, or no? Or separately?
Yeah, we can do either way, either way.
What would you prefer?
Let's do, let's kind of do combined of both, because we'll talk about both at the same time.
All right, and then we'll make motions.
Yes.
Okay.
So in front of you, when you walked in, I gave you a packet, and this is the one sheet I want you to look at. Don't look at the others I've sent you today.
Okay.
They were kind of our working documents, they really, just want to show you how we do things, but look at the front page, this is the one we're going to approve tonight.
Okay.
This is a really important piece right here. This is what, all these, this data will be sent to MDE eventually, so, just so you know, so kind of keep that, bear in mind that. With this budget, and I'm going to hand it off to Sharon here shortly, so you can kind of get a feel of, kind of where she's at, and how she builds a budget, how she runs our monies every month, what she looks for, and, and also kind of her philosophy on budgeting. I think it's only fair to the board, because you're approving our numbers we give you, so you, you need to get to know her a little bit too, but I need to say this, and I said this in my email, it has been a real pleasure working with Sharon. It's hard when you're transitioning business managers right before a budget is due, and, and our prior business manager and I had some disagreements on the budget, I thought it was kind of where we're at versus what she thought. She thought it wasn't going to be good, and I said, no, no, our budget's going to be good, and as you can see, it is. Anyway, we'll get there, but, so yeah, it's been really a fun experience, like, she would bring up things that I maybe haven't heard of before in my 20 years as a superintendent, and then, I'm bringing up things that she likes or dislikes, and we have really good conversations, so, it's been really great, so thank you for that. But we're going to talk about how our levy has increased, how our ADMs have increased, state aid has increased, we're going to talk about how we've used those Esther dollars, remember that half million dollar grant I got? That's embedded in here, we'll talk about that, how, guess what, your school is not shutting down, even if you've heard those rumors, I promise you, you're not, after showing this budget, I think those naysayers will kind of be quiet now, so that'll be good. You're also going to see in the revised budget, that sure enough, we could have balanced it out at zero, but we want to be transparent with you, and so, yeah, we are a little negative there, but we're not going to fudge numbers or move them around, because it doesn't matter anyway. It's, it's over and done, and we're moving on, they don't really, nobody really cares. So anyway, I'm going to now hand it off, oh, one other thing too, you all know that there's been an increase in cost in certain areas too, such as our insurance costs went up, you know, our CLA costs went up, and we're going to work on that too, now that Sharon's on board, we're going to work on those things, our maintenance costs went up a little bit, and then, our, our liability insurance, but also, we're seeing kind of our special ed realm has went up too, but those dollars, excuse me, come back a little bit too. So, we'll talk about all those a little bit more detail here, but I'm going to hand it off to Sharon a little bit now, so she can kind of, again, talk about her and her kind of budgeting schema, and what she foresees for us in the future too, so.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's been wonderful working with Jen, just really amazing.
Just really amazing. I love doing this work. I absolutely fell in love with budgeting, and that's why I am in this job, actually. I worked at American Express for 10 years first, and then I have kids and got into a local school district as the attendance secretary to start with. So I started from the ground up at a school. But when I got into a school and the superintendent sat next to me and we went line by line through the budget, that was it. I loved it. So that's what I do now.
I didn't say she was sane.
But we had an interesting, at that very first school, I think maybe something similar. We had a lot of people come from the public asking. In fact, the first budget or two that I did, we went, the superintendent was talking about a referendum. And the next thing you know, somebody was knocking at my office door and said, "I would like a detailed line by line budget, please." We provide that, and then they became my best friend. Like, what is this? What are you charging here? What are you charging there? So I'm used to that interaction with the public, and it's their right. And I think it can be a beautiful thing. So I love to help people understand all of this. So if there's ever a time that I don't explain something well enough for you to understand or you have a question, please bring that back to me somehow so that I can get you to that point, because I want you to love this as much as I do. Or you can let me love it, and I just want you to understand it. So what, I actually, when I came to the district, I always feel like, oh, it's very unknown, and I don't know, not just this district, but every, any district. I don't get to know that district until I dig into that budget and learn it line by line. And that's how I learn the people that are here. It's how I learn the focus of the district and all of that. So that's what I've been doing in the past week to get to this point. And I'm going to say upfront that I was kind of pulled in a couple of different other directions. Otherwise, I would have had a much better, probably, presentation documentation for you and hoping to do that in July. But what you have in front of you is really all you need to do right now is a big broad overview, because you need to see the bottom line, and then we'll build back up from there. So what I've done, then, is just dug in first, the revenue, and pull that in and build it line by line with the aids and the levies and the federal aids, which is your ESTER dollars that came in, and then also some miscellaneous local revenues. Now, the levies you'll see for the 24 adapted have gone up quite a bit. And right away, I'm like, oh, my goodness. I'm very nervous about this, so I had to check it out. I called M.D.E. a couple of times. They assured me it was okay, but I still had another person that was kind of my ace in the hole at Region 5 that knows the revenue spreadsheets a lot better than mostly anybody I know in Minnesota. And so I called her, and she said, yes, Sharon, that looks good. And so the levy amounts that you see are real, and your district will be getting them. So that's, it's a wonderful thing, because that will allow you, then, to have this positive fund balance at the end when we get there. So you basically just start with the revenues, and then you move to the expenses. And the first thing I do with those expenses is I build a salary spreadsheet. So everybody in the district that works in the district, we put them on a spreadsheet, put all of their salary and their benefits and get them a total, and then apply a percentage of increase, their step movements on lanes and steps if they are so, if that is in the contract. And so we applied a 4% I think at this point for the staff members into this budget. So that's what you're seeing here. And then from the salaries and benefits, you just work your way up. So then you move to services. So that would be like the C.L.A. contract that you have or a contract for sports and all of those types of things. And then supplies, and that could be for the classroom, or it could be supplies to wax the floors in the summer. Everything it takes to operate and run the school, whether it is for educational or noneducational equipment as well. And then there's always the other where it's mostly dues. So if you belong to organizations where everybody, pretty much in the school, does all the way from the board, all the way down to your FFA organization, those are where those things are. So, and then what we do is we take the fund balance, which, fund balance is not our cash on hand. It's assets minus liabilities. So at any time, it's not like you have, the number that I'd like you to look at is the 1,00515158 at the bottom of your 22 actuals. So that is the number that we're starting the current fiscal year with. Again, it's not cash. It is just simply assets. It might be a receivable of cash, less any of your liabilities. So, but we do have pretty good liquid cash in the bank, as you can see in your investment account when you do the treasury report. That is a healthy balance, so that is a good thing. So we start with that fund balance, and then we simply add those revenues and subtract those expenses and get to the ending fund balance. And that's where Jen was talking about changing that policy to be perhaps 25% rather than the 30% that you're at. So the 1,0515 you're starting at is actually at 32% of the expenses for that year. So very good shape. Very good shape. And the revised budget that I did, it includes changes to some revenues that come from the state. So those are reflected based on additional A.D.M.s, again, that Jen had mentioned. And then our expenses. And these things still could change. There's still bills coming in for June and being paid. So for most of the expenses, I allowed for that. The salaries and benefits, we've pretty much paid almost all of them. There is a few that we're going to run some, just a small payroll for here in June. But for the most part, everything is true. So we think we're going to come through about, about at a zero balance budget. But it's a little bit negative right now at 19,400. And we'll see, we'll see where that lands after all of the audit adjustments and such like that, when everything comes through. So June 30th, we take a snapshot of the district, of all of the things that happen, and we make everything either land on this side of the line up to and including June 30th or into 2024, 2023, 2024 fiscal year on that side of the line. So we make that June 30th, and that's what we make everything come together to and present to the audit, for auditing. And I have always strived in a district, the districts that I'm in, to have a balanced budget. A lot of board members or a lot of the public might look at you and say, well, that just means that you fudged something at some point, because you don't come out with a balanced budget. But is that not our job, is to come with a balanced budget? Because that's the monies that you have, and you adjust your expenses accordingly. Now, if you want to build your fund balance, that's fine, and it can grow, and, you know, you have a positive fund balance, like the 24 one. But then you have choices and decisions to make as well. So if you have projects to do, like the lighting, maybe you want to put them in, and then you revise your budget. So we'll see where we come out at the end of '23. But it will be favorable if it ends up where it is on the paper. That would be 33%. It'd be very good. And the end of '24, the '24 budget, if it comes out the way it does at the end of '23 and then apply '24 to it, we would have a $324,300 surplus in that fiscal year, and then you would be at 40.1 for fund balance. But there may be uses for that money.
I want to renegotiate.
So your district is in wonderful shape. You can tell that the community, you know, negative or positive, it's an investment in the community, and it's a good thing. And things have happened here that have been good, because this is in good shape. And the other very good indication that good things are happening is your enrollment is staying steady or increasing. And it is increasing here, and that's why your revenue is increasing. So congratulations on that. And so just, do you want me to go through just a few things for the ESTER dollars?
Oh, that'd be good.
I was just going to ask.
Fun stuff.
I was just going to ask about that, so.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
So what I've done is, there is $315,000 approximately that we're going to apply this year, the ESTER dollars, and then there will be about $300,000 left for next year. So then for this year, what we will be doing, and this was, there's a few that are planned, and then a few I pulled in to see if we could add. So there was a E.L. teacher that we will, these items were already in a budget to go to ESTER dollars for this year. So an E.L. teacher, and she is retired now, so. And then larger monitors for the teachers, a school van, and, let's see. I think that, another.
Is it the furniture, too?
Yeah, the furniture, but the furniture is in the '24 budget. The furniture was budgeted, though, for the ESTER dollars, but I did build it into the '24 budget, because it's going to take a while to get all of that furniture in and to the classrooms. The one thing, or the two things that I pulled into this year is the social worker could be applied to these dollars to use. And then also one teacher for class size reduction, that there was two teachers in a classroom. We could use these dollars to pay for that teacher for this fiscal year. So that would be, to me, that would be a good use of those ESTER dollars. It's better than not spending them.
So a question.
Don't want to lose them.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So a question that I have on the ESTER dollars. So you've applied 350,000 to '23, right?
Yes.
And 300 will be on '24?
315,000.
15, okay. So those are one-time dollars we're going to get. So what are we looking at for '24, '25? And any clue yet as far as our budget out that far?
Or state aid and stuff like that, you're asking?
Well, I mean, just saying that the state aid might increase in a normal, average way that it usually does. It's gone up more this year, but I'm just trying to think down the road a little bit, what we might be looking at without that $600,000.
Like trying to maintain that fund balance of.
Exactly.
Between 20 and 30%.
Yeah. So we looked at that a little bit, and so that's why the E.L. teacher is already, she's through attrition. So that one will have to be maintained.
We won't see that expense again.
Yeah. The monitors are one-time, the van is a one-time, the furniture is a one-time. The social worker will have to be, you know, that will have to be pulled back into the regular fund balance or the budget. So that's about 63,000 a year. The other item that we were going to put in there was the Carlin. So.
Oh, yeah. Student services.
Student services type position. But there is the money from the new budget year. There's a $40,000 tab allocated to student services type positions, so hopefully we could tap into that then.
So what you're seeing is, I think, is so you've got one-time revenue offset by one-time expenses.
Yes.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do, yeah.
Yep.
Or have a funding source to pull in. So like, I also put the aid for the library in as we're using ESTER dollars to retain her. So she didn't, like, we're retaining her in the district with ESTER dollars, because then if you use ESTER dollars to do that, then you can use that $40,000 in the new budget to fund her as well. So then it's kind of helping step into using that. Otherwise, you probably wouldn't be able to even use that $40,000 that was available, because there's certain criteria that you have to follow to get.
So I'm just concerned about maintaining a fund balance going forward without those ESTER dollars.
Right.
Right. So if you have this 324,000, that'll be very helpful with that. But the only position that you have in here that you'll have to build back in is that social worker. The others should be able to have some funding from those other sources. And then hopefully, by that time, your levy and your aid will have increased a little bit more. And she could also be paid for, special ed went up quite a bit as well.
And special ed is like a two-year cycle. We see that money back in two years. So last year's money, we'll see in that '24, '25 budget. And it did increase, I can't tell you how much, but it did.
Got some $100,000.
Yeah, I think it did. Yeah, a couple hundred thousand.
And then Sharon, when you mentioned the van, is that a new van, or is that an additional van?
That is the van that was already purchased, correct?
Okay. But that we already planned on taking out of ESTER.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that was already budgeted.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so the best benefit is to try to fund one-time purchases or temporary programs. Like when the ESTER money originally came out, the district I was in, we actually did address it with ventilation systems. But then also, we hired someone to come in and identify the students that needed the additional help to get, you know, to get their education levels back up. And so, but we hired them as a two-year position. So they knew that they were going to have a two-year position. But then if we were able to build them into the budget and fund them later, that would be great. Or if we needed them at the district for that purpose, we'd figure it out. But we hired them at a two-year position as it was a temporary, as the revenues were temporary as well, so.
So I think Dave is asking a really good question that you all should be thinking about. You know, even with that half million dollar ESTER grant, can we still sustain? If you look at the very last number on the sheet, it's 324,300. That's what we are predicting when we end the school year next year as a positive, and we spent all our ESTER dollars still. This is what we still will end up with. That's our plan, anyway. Possibly more, if we can get like the C.L.A. contract down, things like that. But we're working on all those things.
She's already cut it already.
Yeah, she's already been cutting it, so. But things like that. I mean, we have all year to increase that 324. But boy, it was sure a nice gift to get all these fun-free things here, these next, or last year and this year. But we're kind of in between right now, the two years.
That number's roughly the ESTER money.
It is. Yeah, and that's kind of what we're doing, yeah. And we kind of want you to see that a little bit.
Yeah, and if we didn't spend it, it would just go back and then get kicked back to everybody.
Everybody. So we wanted to spend it. Trust me, we wanted to spend it. Any questions?
I have one more question then. So if we're looking down the expenditures and we go to the equipment. Okay. Okay, David. Were you like, why, why such a dramatic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering why the, why the change from '23 to '24 is over half.
So like, you know, we had.
From '23 to '24, so there was a large purchase of computers for E-rate in that '23 year-to-date figure.
Okay, or no, in the 2022, under equipment?
Yep.
2022. Okay.
In 2022, I.
We have 320,000.
Yes.
And then down here, the next, it's 76,000. That's a lot, right?
Yep.
And then now, we're predicting 31,000.
31,000, because we'll have less of.
Less to purchase.
Less of the purchases, but. Let me look at what. let me look at what that 320,000 is.
Yeah. Keep in mind too, within that expenditures, the services, supplies, and equipment also houses some LTFM. So that's when we did do our LED lighting too. So partial LED lighting costs came out of there, not all of it, because remember, we split that up into two years.
I know.
The 22 and 23.
Is the kitchen part of that as well?
Oh, the kitchen was a big one too, wasn't it?
That would be in fund too.
But that, yeah. So.
Well, we, so the other half of the lighting is coming out of our, it's coming in this next fiscal year. But wouldn't that be considered 2024?
For next year, yes. So that would be on the other side here.
Yeah, but so that doesn't make sense that we're only budgeting 31,000 when we're gonna pay.
It's sprinkled throughout the services, supplies, equipment, and some general funds. So they're all kinda together. So I wish it was laid out really easy, but it's not.
Right, sorry.
Yeah, a lot of things that you might think are equipment are supplies as well.
It's messy.
Yeah, because-
But think of LTFM and all three of them though. Services, supplies, and equipment.
Okay.
You can put it on all three of them.
Okay. More questions, Dave?
I'm just wondering, you know, that's our budget. Are we not expecting to spend as much in 24 then on the equipment?
Correct. You know, we always wanna have some money sitting there though. Something's gonna come up, especially if we're talking specifically about building in grounds, for example. We know there's constant maintenance on that. So we wanna continue to have money sitting there just in case. You know, and not that I don't trust the State Department, because I don't wanna say that. But I also wanna be, they're unpredictable sometimes. And so if we don't get, let's say, all the LTFM dollars we deserve, I wanna be prepared for that too. So I'd rather budget lower.
We spent a lot of money at the pool.
We did spend a lot of money at the pool. We bought that water heater.
The sand filter.
And the sand filter. Yeah, we gotta go way back.
Well, that's not gonna get replaced, so that's built in there somewhere.
Supplies and equipment, somewhere in there, okay.
Yes, good one. Yes. I could've looked at this, I'm sorry. It was right here.
And those are things you hope you don't have to purchase again in 24, right?
Right.
Shouldn't have to, they should be under warranty.
Looks like there was new scoreboard maybe.
Yes, we got new scoreboards, yeah, things like that.
But so then, that was in 2023, wasn't it?
High school gym scoreboard, it's like 25,000, shot clock, 5,000.
Yeah.
Well, part of, part of last year's, this year's school year was 22.
So then some of that would go in the 2022? Okay.
Because of getting it. Good job, that's right. That's exactly right.
Okay. So the preliminary, so E is the approval of the revised budget. That's up through 23 revised. And then F, the approval of fiscal year 23, 24 preliminary budget, that's the 24 ADP column, okay?
Now, Sharon said too, coming next month, we wanna even bring you more data, because now we're into that fiscal year. Because right now, it's kinda confusing because we're ending one year. Not everything has bottomed out yet or closed. And we're entering a new fiscal year. The numbers won't change a lot, but we wanna still bring you more data in July, so kinda plan for that again. You know, something specific like this again. Especially with new business management too. She wants to show you what she knows, and I wanna show her off a little bit too, so. We wanna give you more data.
By, yeah, by fund balance unassigned, and then you have, like, LTFM. So you can see your fund balance and then where that's gonna land and where it's gonna end up. And then I'll also bring back this equipment question answered.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any further questions about the revised budget for 22, 23? Okay, so at this time, I will take a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 22, 23 revised budget.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 22, 23 revised budget.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then we will move right on to the approval of the fiscal year 23, 24 ISD 499 School District Preliminary Budget. So I'm looking for a motion on that.
I have a motion to approve the 23, 24 preliminary budget.
Thank you. Second?
Yep.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, so the next one is very simply that we need to approve the posting of the notice of the ISD 499 filing period for the 2023 school board election. We are mandated to reelect for the positions that we appointed for. And so we have to, we are, we have to have approval of the posting of the notice. How do you love that?
It's all official.
It's all official. Do you need to add anything to that?
No, that was good. That's it.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the posting of the notice of the 499 filing period school board election.
So a move?
Thank you. And second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, the next one is the approval of the Mauer County Family Services Collaborative Joint Powers Agreement. And so the Mauer County Collaborative, Mauer County Collaborative is one of the boards that I sit on. And they have a joint powers agreement like we have with athletics. The program coordinator is Paul Basil, and then the different members of the board, or the different collaborative representatives are like Mauer County Public Health, Mauer County Corrections, Head Start, Grand Middle School, Leroy School, Southland, Lyle, Austin Schools, Mauer County Township, Caregiver, Gerard, and Mental Health, Community Action Agency, and SMEC. Those are all the people that serve on this Mauer County Collaborative. And so there's a kind of a long joint powers agreement, which just basically says that we're all working together for the betterment of, in primary, it's for youth and young adults and mental health and needs being met. There's bigger words than that, but that's kinda what it is. I think you have a copy of it. I just was at that meeting today. It's a wonderful group of people who are just there for, they're just there for people. You know, they're just there to help. And so what we just need is the approval of the Mauer County Family Services Collaborative Joint Powers Agreement. And then I'll have a signature on there for our school district that we're a part of this. So I'd like a motion for that. Or any questions first? Does anybody have any questions regarding it?
Have you had positive interaction in your meetings with them, or are they good?
They're wonderful. They're absolutely wonderful, and they provide, they had a, they had a couple of family nights. And at one of them, they had different services set up where people could come to a park and had a family fun night, and they had different booths set up and stuff, and they had over 300 people come. So that was huge. It was way more than they expected.
Like what kind of services, like?
Everything from help with daycare, food and shell, mental health, how to, how to apply for Head Start, all different booths from all the different services. And their hope is that with us participating more and more, the board, the school boards and the superintendents, that maybe they can come out to the greater Austin area, you know, to the rural areas and to help provide some things for that or resources too. But they're kinda getting things going with that. But they are a wonderful group of very caring people, and it's an interesting group. They only meet, they only meet four times a year as a bigger group. And then smaller entities work on their part, so.
How long has it been on?
You know, that is a good question. I heard somebody say 2016 was the other time that they made a joint agreement. But I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was in action prior to that or not. But that was kinda the last time they had updated their joint powers agreement, so. They felt-
We've never met before, have we?
We are a member, but we haven't been sending a representative.
Okay.
And they would like, they liked to have a school board member attend. And then if they can't, they can have a superintendent or both, a school board member and a superintendent. Some school districts send both. You know, so just this past year, I got on that and we started being represented.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we've been a part of it, we just haven't really had a good representation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I'll second.
I'll second.
Amanda gotcha ahead of ya. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so the next thing is our school board committee reports. I'll get there. And the community education, Amanda and I are on that. And you should have in your packet that came to you tonight, a really nice summary from Kate Rohr. So it says, "Community Education Leroy Ostrander School Board Report, June 2023." And it's a summary of community ed programs from September 2022 to August 2023. You can see that we've greatly increased the amount of classes being offered, and there seems to be really good attendance at many things. You'll note that she put in red some of the classes that did not have enough participants to run the class. School year planning for upcoming activities. Lots going on again. And then she listed all the community, community education advisory council, the members that are on. And when, when we meet. And the goals were to increase the offering activities, including a variety and added community involvement, to work to ensure the community education director has a better understanding and is assisting with all programs under the community education banner, ECFE, Cardinal Kids, Cardinal Care, preschool, et cetera. And to work with the financial aspect of community education program to ensure that debits and credits are aligned for each offering as appropriate, to increase community education equipment, supplies, and activities where needed, and to continue to improve and increase our community education advisory council. So those were the goals. Just a nice report that's pretty, did everybody have their report? Anybody need a copy of that? Okay. So, and then meet and confer. So at the meet and confer meeting, because you were not able to be there that day, but so it was Angie and I, correct? And what I have down is that we met on May 31st. And a major part of our discussion was how we were implementing the strategic plan. And they had a lot of great input on that. And we would, we looked at specific objectives. For example, objective 2.1, during the spring of 2023, we would utilize staff and community to evaluate and plan curriculum. And so with teachers and Erin and us were discussing how the use of the exit interview to evaluate how things were going and if there needed to be some changes in the curriculum. And all of the teachers that were there really spoke highly of the IXL and us getting on board with that and that it helps them to see very rapidly what areas might need to be boosted in the curriculum. So they felt really good with that. And we review the chain of command, as Jennifer had given it to us the time before. And under objective 7.1, during the spring of 2023, to create a professional development plan for all levels of leadership. And so we talked about, again, the curriculum, about how the Marzano evaluation is more feeding into them having, participating in what's gonna be the changes that need to be made, and then also that the summer leadership academy is gonna happen for our leadership kids and that that's a work in progress, something that's really developing. Those seem to be the main things. Do you have anything you wanna add, Angie?
No, that's my notes too.
Okay, great, great. So we had a really good, and we set up a time to meet again.
Oh, one other thing we did talk about was how we can try to, ideas for how to get middle school and high school parents more engaged.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Did we set a date for our next time?
It's September 27.
Okay. Jennifer, you'll help me with that, right?
I'll make sure.
Did we get that posted at the right time?
All right, I got it.
All right, MSBA, any communications from them?
No.
Nope, okay, all right. And MSHSL? All right, scholarship?
Oh, we awarded about $80,000 on graduation.
Hope they all use it.
Yep.
Me too.
And I really commend Angie for doing a great job at graduation. Really honoring the kids but keeping it moving, both. And that's really, really, really well done. Thank you so much. Certified negotiations, that probably got some things you wanna talk to us about?
Not a lot. I mean, we met, we met, what was it, a couple weeks ago for the second time. The teachers gave us their proposal or desires. Not gonna go into any detail about that, of course.
Right, of course.
But we're just due to meet as a committee tomorrow. And we're gonna come up with what our counter offer might be, and then we'll be meeting with the teachers about a week from now.
Okay.
So.
Good, good.
It's going well though. I mean, it's very, so far, so good.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much. Non-certified, we're not doing anything with that right now. SMEC?
We've had a couple meetings. They've got some new signage. If you are on I-90 and you look off to your left, there's, it lists all the schools now. Because Dan said it looked like a prison before, so now it has some wording, and you can see all the schools on there. They've done some other work out there. There's 98 students in credit recovery this summer. And there's a partnership now with Houston Online, and so each district is being offered five free and half, five half-price seats through Houston Online for students to utilize.
What?
So Houston has an online school, and they're partnered somehow now with, or in some sort of partnership with SMEC. And so through that, each district is offered five free seats to utilize in the Houston Online School and five half-price seats.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know, Erin, what could you use those for? I mean, would it be a class here and there? Would it have to be like a full-time enrollment thing?
Uh, no, it'd be kinda like how, keep on an online class.
That's, okay.
It's just a, just a different avenue, or a different institution than what we'd use.
A different offering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. District policy review, we did, we took care of that earlier. World's Best Workforce, anything new on that? Okay, Buildings and Grounds? Okay, buildings and grounds?
We met tonight, actually, and we talked about a number of things that we are recommending to come before the board, and that will come next month.
Okay.
So that's where you'll get the details, come before the board for approval, nothing really big as far as projects, but, you know, just things like, you know, trying to get that football field back in shape, the mural that'll be on the front entrance for the safety purposes, and at the same time doing that, do the windows out the pool entrance as well. Some electrical issues, I think you guys are probably aware of, the problems they've had in the, in the office with enough electricity around the copy machine and other things, so that's, that's a problem, so, you know, just those types of projects, and you'll get more detail next month.
I was traveling to another town the other day, and this was in a residential area, but I was thinking about what we would have to do to have something like this, but it was just a little figure of a person, you know, standing, I mean, it was, it was on the property of the homeowner, that just showed there was a child there, and then it said courtesy speed limit, seventeen miles an hour.
One of those little green?
Yeah, it was like a little, yeah, fluorescenty-colored, but, but then I had never seen before this sign, and I didn't know, it seemed, it was on a person's yard, not a school district, but it said courtesy speed limit, and I thought, what would we have to do to have, it's on their property, it's not on the road, it's not a big, but I was like, it might just make people think, what is a courtesy speed, like, you know, like, what is an appropriate speed limit when you're driving by a school where kids are letting out, so it's just, I didn't know, you know, what, where exactly, I thought I would kind of look into it a little bit and just see, if it's on our own personal property, I don't know, okay, so I saw that, I thought it was interesting. All right, so next month you'll give us some recommendations.
There'll be some things to approve next month.
Right, and will we have that in time to, will we have that ahead of the meeting?
Should be able to have the quotes in your packets and all those kinds of things, you know, what they.
I might even send it out in one of my weekly emails too, so you maybe get a double dose, but.
That's okay, because it's nice to have it ahead of time, and then the Maur County Collaborative, I already talked about that, okay, all right. Any other school board committee comments? All right, upcoming dates, fourth of July, our next school board meeting is July eighteenth, our August school board meeting is August fifteenth, staff development starts in August twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, Labor Day, first phase of school, motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Time?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Thirteen.
Seven thirteen, thank you. We adjourned.